Three, two, one. On Out to Coop Live, we talk to progressives, activists and troublemakers of all sorts, right, from our own backyards and from across the country. On Fridays, Sean Kitchen and I break down the good, the bad and the ugly in state and national politics, but you can get both the live show and our Friday like flagship show. I've been told to call it our flagship show. So that's what I'm doing here on our flagship show by subscribing to our podcast on Podbean, iTunes, Spotify, Google Podcasts, wherever you get your podcasts, which you can only join the conversation live through the Podbean app on Mondays at 7:00 PM Eastern. Sometimes we fluctuate that time, but it's mostly at 7:00 PM Eastern. So here we are. You can help support this show by becoming a patron for as little as five bucks a month. Go to patreon.com/RCpress. But if you are listening to our live show on the Podbean app, well, you can show us some love right now. You can drop a few bucks in our tip jar by clicking on that little gift icon at the bottom of your screen. Fill your digital pockets with Podbean's Golden Beans. Yes, that's what they call them. And send us a gift of your choice. Every gift that you send helps support and expand this podcast. And if you're looking for some more PA-based progressive talk, yes, tonight, you could just tune in right tonight. Keep it going all night long. Tune into The Rick Smith Show is live stream from 9:00 PM Eastern on his YouTube channel, Twitter, Facebook, frankly, any place you can find a stream, you're going to find Rick. You can also subscribe, subscribe to his podcast, wherever you get his podcast. That's The Rick Smith Show. And our new promo from the awesome folks at The Game Inn. For all our gamers out there, I want to introduce you to the go-to place for all your gaming needs. Check out The Game Inn located right on Route 309 in Quakertown, PA. The Game Inn is a Quakertown-based, black family-owned gaming store. And not only are they friends of the show and awesome folks all around, they're like literally, they're the family of my, one of my brothers, my brother, my son's best friend. So they're just awesome folks. Not only they're friends of the show and awesome folks all around, they have almost every gaming product you can imagine. Retro N64s, Nintendo DSs, PS4s, Switches and much, much more. Huge variety of video games, all platforms, large collections of collectibles, like especially Funko Pops. You won't believe the number of Funko Pops they got there. And hey, if you've got kids in there, they get, they get a discount with every A on their report card. You could check them out at their Facebook page, follow them on Twitter at @TheGameInn. That's @TheGameInn with two N's. And got a question about a game, looking for something hard to get, message them on Facebook, drop them an email, TheGameInn, that's with two N's again, TheGameInnPA@gmail.com, or give them a call at 267-424-2535. Check out their website at TheGameInn.com. All this will be in our show notes for those folks who are catching this in the podcast. Do check them out. If you've got any question, trying to get a hard, you know, kind of a hard to get game or something like that, give them a call. Talk to them there. They order stuff. He's able to get stuff in. He's just great, great folks. And with a special shout out to Jonathan Mann, who wrote our intro song, There Are No People in the Future. Check out all his great stuff on his YouTube page and follow him on Twitter at SongADayMan. That's with two N's, SongADayMan at Twitter. So here we are on tonight's show. I'm so psyched to welcome Omar Ray. Ray is a candidate running for Lehigh County Commissioner, District Five. He's a community organizer from Upper Saucon Township. His platform includes distributing COVID vaccines equitably and efficiently, investing in affordable housing for families and seniors, supporting local schools and technical training programs, ending the cash bail system, which criminalizes poverty, and preserving farmlands and open spaces. This year's Democratic Party, which he is running in, running for this thing, will be on May 18th. You can check out his campaign. Go to OmarForLehigh.com. That's OmarForLehigh.com. That'll take you to his webpage, gives all the information. Check out his background. Check out his, his platform. But more importantly, check him out right now because we got him on the show tonight. Omar Ray, welcome to the show.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Hey, man. So I was, I, you know, told you this a little bit before the show tonight that I had a chance to watch the replay of your campaign event, your launch on Thursday night. So you're like, literally like right off the launch here, right? And into the campaigning. So, you know, I, I've mentioned this to you too as well. When I first moved to Pennsylvania, I moved to Lehigh Valley. I lived in Allentown. I lived on South 13th Street. Even though I live in Bucks County now, my heart is always going to remain in Lehigh County, Lehigh Valley. And I will tell you this is that I, you know, I'm, I, anybody who will listen, like when I had like Rick Kudjuski on the show kind of a while back, I was saying to him, it's like, you know, look, I looked at, everybody's got to start paying attention to what's going on the Lehigh Valley because that's the future of Pennsylvania, right? I mean, it's the third largest population center in the state, right? You've got probably the mix of the Pennsylvania that is, that is emerging. And, you know, and here you are. So let me, let me, let me ask you this a little bit. So just to kind of take us back to the kind of your journey a little bit. So you're running here for county commissioner. Like, what got you to this point? Like, like what led you to kind of decide, hey, you know what? I want to run for county commissioner?
Okay. Well, first of all, let me say that that sound burst that you heard earlier, that might've been me. I changed my headphones.
Okay. Well, good. At least it wasn't a, at least it wasn't a sunburst, like a sunflare or some, something worse.
Okay. And what's, and what has motivated me to run for commissioner? Well, okay. So I got involved into politics in 2016. That's when I decided to become an active participant in this democracy, seeing the rise of Donald Trump. And well, to be blunt, fashism. And
I hear you.
Yeah. And so I volunteered as a driver for VIPs at the Democratic National Convention in 2016, when it came to Philadelphia. I drove exclusively for Alexis Herman, the first black woman to serve as Secretary of, Secretary of Labor under Bill Clinton. And then afterwards, I went on to be an intern for the HRC campaign right here in Lehigh County, trying to get her elected. And we saw the results. So then afterwards, I kept, I just kept going. I kept, you know, participated, I kept being involved in the community. I was, I've been an escort for Planned Parenthood for people, mostly women who are trying, who are seeking healthcare. I've, I was a Bernie Sanders delegate last year. I ran as a Bernie Sanders delegate last year. I went on to, and still I'm with Make the Road. In last year, Make the Road, I went out and spoke to people, knocked on doors in Allentown, urging them to participate in the census. And I protested against the attainment of undocumented migrants in Berks County. And just, well, what motivated me to run is seeing, well, I want to see more progressive politics. And I'm not, you know, there was no other progressive that seems to be running out here.
Yeah. And so, I mean, I look, I mean, you, especially you make, like you talk about Make the Road, right? For example, I mean, the organizing work that they've been doing in Lehigh Valley has been just absolutely outstanding. And, and to see, you know, you connected up with those folks, which, which is absolutely fantastic because they're, I mean, again, it's an organization that is grounded in the community and has been doing that hard work of organizing. And so you're, I mean, and talking a little about, hearing a little about your background here. So you didn't just, just kind of like decide all of a sudden like, hey, you know, let me kind of like fill out a, you know, a line on my resume. Let me run for office. But you've actually kind of been doing some of the, some of that groundwork, working in kind of campaigns, kind of being active in the Lehigh Valley, getting involved with the, like you said, the cash bail stuff and recognizing that, you know, you know, I think, look, I, I can't tell you how many people I talked to that 2016 was really like just a wake-up call, right? Was the, the kind of almost like the calling to say, okay, now are you, you know, do you complain, continue to complain, or are you going to step up and you're going to do something, right? And some folks, you know, started organizations and other folks are kind of running for office. And you look at the number of people who are young folks, right? And by young, I mean, like, you know, like bye-bye boomers kind of thing, like looking for folks that are in their twenties, their thirties and their forties that are kind of stepping up, that represent, you know, you know, the Lehigh Valley, represent Pennsylvania in a, in the emerging Pennsylvania in a much more direct way than it's kind of the old line politics. So, I mean, that's just kind of, you know, here you are, right? Starting at the commissioner level. Let me ask you this, because this is something that really, I've been so floored by the number of people that got activated in 2016. And instead of thinking like, hey, you know what? I'm going to run for a state representative to like, you know, to Congress. But really starting with saying, no, I'm going to start in my own community. I'm going to start with my county. I'm going to start with, you know, with my city. And I'm going to run there because that's where the rubber hits the road. I mean, has that been part of your journey too as well?
Yes, I believe in, you know, start at home. You know, if everyone, start, start at home. You have, there is so much that, so much happens here at the county level, at the local level, that's just not affected by your congressperson or the president or senator. Criminal justice reform, that's county level. Out here in Lehigh County, whether or not you are arrested for having marijuana, that's determined by the district attorney of the county. Whether or not money is, whether or not money goes, how much money goes to 911, whether that, whether or not that's funded, that happened at the county. There are so many things that happens on the county level. So.
Well, that, and I think that's true. And I think that for the longest time, I mean, certainly my generation, I might come, I'm a Gen Xer, right? And a Gen Xer is like, we felt like, okay, the baby, baby, baby boomers took all our jobs and took all the jobs, the really cool jobs and sent the rest of the jobs overseas, right? Left us kind of like with the, you know, on the decline, watching kind of factories disappear from our neighborhoods, locking, you know, watching the kind of like the possibilities go, go by. And, you know, my generation, we were kind of a smaller generation too. So we're like, the baby boomers got all the spots. There's no place for us. So we're just going to be all kind of like bent out of shape and we're going to go like punk rock, DIY, or like, you know, figure out and get all, but you know, didn't really see the opportunities and the thought of getting involved in like local politics or like, you know, county politics, which is like, not even in our like, you know, not even on the agenda, right? Didn't seem, it felt like the, never before. And now it seems like that is, that script has completely flipped now. Now it seems like these elections at the county level, right, are exciting, right? And you've got kind of like new generations of folks coming in and saying, no, we're going to, this is where we're going to run. We're going to run right here. And this is where the excitement is, where the organizing is. And I see that happening right there and like right there in Lehigh County.
Yes. Yes, it is. It is exciting. And it's happening here in Lehigh County. You have so many groups that are, they are, they want change. They are working for change. I've been a part of those groups. You have, again, Make the Road and DSA, Democratic Socialists of America, Lehigh Valley. And so many more in other groups that I can't even think of right now. I've done a lot of, I've done a lot of trying to help out in the county. And I've spoken to a lot of people in the county, hundreds of people who are not what we call the super voters, but people who feel that the political system has abandoned them, who feel that both Democrats and Republicans are two sides of an elitist coin.
Right.
And, you know, there's some, I want to talk to, I want to help those people who feel that, that they have been ignored. I want them re-engaged. That's how we, that's how we strengthen this democracy. That's how we hold on to it.
Now, do you, do you think that, that, I know, I'm curious, as you talk to people and as you're, you know, been involved with these different organizations, are you, are you getting the sense then too, that, that people are beginning to see like their own power too as well? Like, cause I know that, like you said, a lot of times Democrats, Republicans, two sides of the same coin, kind of, I get that. People are feeling really disaffected. But it also seems now like you got more and more people that are becoming engaged because they're seeing kind of a different message, a different vision, and a different face of those politics. I mean, are you seeing that when you're talking to people about running for office at the county level?
Yes, I do. I am, you know, I'm seeing more, especially in Allentown, I'm seeing people of color running for city council, the mayor. You have me, person of color, running for commissioner, District Five, in a place that's predominantly white. But yes, I'm seeing people, I'm seeing young people, people of color, women who felt that in the past, politics ignored them, but seeing that they have power, that they can make change. There, there's also, I would say that a lot of that has to do with just nationally, you're seeing people of color taking power. For example, Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez, we're seeing her, and that's motivating people. That's motivating me.
And I see like, right now, you see these turnover. I know that Zakiya Smalls, for example, she was the first African-American woman to be kind of ever elected for Lehigh, Lehigh County Commissioners, right? And she was elected in 2019, right? Just this past two years ago, I believe?
Yes, that's when her term started.
Yeah. And, and so seeing that even happen at the local level, right? And kind of like you said, especially you're talking about, you know, like the, the Lehigh County that I think is in a lot of, say, Pennsylvanians imaginary, is not the Lehigh County of, you know, the steel mills anymore, right? It's not, you know, that, that stereotypical kind of, you know, white male, blue collar worker, right? But, you know, the working class of, of, of Lehigh Valley, right? Kind of working people in Lehigh Valley is a much broader swath. And like you said, right? It's, you have, I mean, you just look at the kind of immigrant population and like all throughout the Lehigh Valley, right? And even people that have moved into Pennsylvania from, say, from New York or from surrounding areas. You know, you have a kind of, a kind of a rich, you know, diverse group of people kind of living in Lehigh County. And, and we're starting to see that in terms of representation too.
Yes, I agree. Yeah, I absolutely agree. We're changing. Lehigh County's changing. And not just in terms of, not only in terms of complexion, but also in ideas, because new people coming in.
Absolutely. So let me ask you this then. So with the kind of changing ideas, so give me a sense of, you know, for lack of a better term, like the lay of the land in Lehigh Valley, as you see it, what are some of the kind of the issues or the problems that use, that, you know, that, that you want to get in there and you want to get your hands dirty, you want to work on? What, what seems to be some of those major problems that you want to address?
I'm going to say there are three key challenges in the foreseeable future of Lehigh County. One, equitable distribution of COVID-19 vaccine. Two, addressing the homelessness, addressing homelessness in Lehigh County. And three, criminal justice. And I think these are problems that are experienced all over the country. Lehigh County, I don't think is any different. So in terms of equitable COVID-19 vaccine, Pennsylvania looks like it wants to, wants to get kids back in school, in person, in-person class. But they, they seem very enthusiastic about that. But I, they don't seem as enthusiastic as making sure teachers have, making sure all the teachers are vaccinated. I mean, they just, it seems like they want to push teachers back in. And I've spoken to some teachers who their, their thoughts on that range from worried to angry.
Right.
I mean, you know, if we're going to teach, if we're going to treat our teachers like, if we're going to treat our teachers like frontline workers, prioritize them, get them COVID-19 vaccine.
Yeah. And the thing is, I would say with that too as well, right? Cause you say, I don't know a teacher, I don't know a single teacher, right? Who says like, no, you know what I really want to do? I want to be on Zoom all day, right? I don't know one single teacher who says that. I mean, almost every, I mean, every teacher I talk to wants to be back in the classroom, wants to have the kids back in the classroom, but they're not going to sacrifice their lives for it, right? I mean, they're going to say that we can do this, we could get, but we have to do it safely. And just like you said, I mean, if you're going to call us frontline workers, then we got to treat it as such, right? Then we should be prioritizing, I mean, and not just teachers, let's be clear, you know, all frontline workers, right? Need to be have that. But if we want our kids back in school and like, look, I love my kids like, like nobody's business, but I want them back in school, right? I am not, I am a poor substitute for, for my kids' teachers, right? So, I mean, absolutely, right? So it's not a question of like, you know, it's this weird thing that happens. They say teachers are trying to prevent, no, teachers are the, teachers are the first ones that want to be back in the classroom.
Yes, they do want to be back in the classroom. I've, teachers I've spoken to, they want, they love teaching, they love their students. They do want to be in the classroom. And if they can safely be back in the classroom, they absolutely want to be in the classroom. But to do that, part of that is COVID-19 vaccine.
Yep.
They need to be, yeah, we need to get them, we need to get those shots into their arms. And there's also, we need money for ventilation systems that are just too old right now. But yeah, definitely COVID-19 vaccines.
Absolutely. And then you also mentioned then kind of like number two, that issue of homelessness in the, in
Yes.
The county.
Yes. So the past few months, we have rents and mortgages have been deferred in Pennsylvania. But that's still, but not abolished, just deferred. That's, at some point, that's going to come due.
Right. That's, that's setting people up for eviction, right?
Yes, that's, I see that as a ticking time bomb, like what happens when all that's due. We need to address that. And also get affordable housing for those who are homeless right now. And also, speaking of the homeless, COVID-19 vaccines. What about, what about making sure that the homeless are vaccinated? I mean, if a disease, if COVID-19 can make its way from China to the rest of the planet, then it can definitely make its way from from the Allentown, homeless person at the Allentown Transit Center to the million-dollar homes of Upper Saucon. We need to, we need, we need to help everyone. We're all interconnected.
Right. That, that's the whole thing, right? I, I think, I think it's, it's weird when we hear these, I don't know, you know, choose either like these, these random talking heads or people spouting off about like who's deserving of the vaccine or not. It's like, wait a minute, the, the purpose of doing all the vaccine is not to say like, okay, you're going to pass through the eye of the needle, right? Kind of thing. No, no, that's not the purpose. The purpose of the vaccine is to kind of protect everybody. So it's actually, the more people that are going to be in a position where they can contract it the easiest, right? They could spread it the easiest, right? Or are going to, are kind of like, you know, at risk are the ones where you want to get the vaccine to. Why? Because that protects everybody, right? By, by squashing down the virus. I mean, this should not be brain surgery. It should not be turned into some weird kind of like, like moral test about who's allowed to have the vaccine.
Yes, I agree. We need to, yeah, COVID-19 vaccine needs to be equitably distributed if you need to worry about.
Well, very good. And then you're talking about criminal justice reform. Tell me about that.
Yeah. Yes. So, and criminal justice reform, we've already, this county has already made moves toward it. There's one commissioner in particular who's, who's been, who's been working on that, Dave Harrington. He's been sitting on the, a newly established Criminal Justice Reform Committee. If you ever go to the commissioner meetings and you sit in on the Criminal Justice Reform Committee, it's Dave Harrington versus 60-plus people who want questions answered. And I don't, and one is a rather lonely number. He's definitely working as hard as he can. I want to do more than hold that line. I want to help with criminal justice reform. I want, you know, I want to make sure that those who are incarcerated also, I want to make sure that people, that we're not incarcerating people just because we are, just because they are poor in Lehigh County. Even in the Lehigh County, even in Lehigh County jail, you had an outbreak of COVID-19. And, and a number of guards that called in to a commissioners meeting, and they spoke, some of them spoke anonymously, but they are terrified as, as prisoners and their, and their families.
Of course, right.
Contracting COVID-19. And we should also worry about, let's, those people who are non-violent offenders, let's, let's look at early release. So prisons aren't COVID-19 super spreaders.
Absolutely. I mean, and I like the idea where you said there too as well, was you got, you had Dave Harrington on the, like, on the board or the county commissioners. And then as being kind of one voice. And I think that, you know, this is something, you know, on Out to Coop Live and kind of in Raging Chicken and kind of much more broadly of that Sean Kitchen and I have been kind of, you know, we've been talking about and hammering for years now, is that, you know, approaching kind of what the agenda has to be, right? For my view, like I'm, you know, from the progressive left, however you want to call it, right, is really about being strategic and building power, right? And that means like, not just getting like one person elected to like, you know, county commissioners or a board, right? Or city council, but to have like more than one, right? I mean, this is kind of the lesson that we learned at the, you know, we've learned both at, at the state level and at the national level, is that we've got the squad nationwide. And what I've, you know, been talking to folks here in Pennsylvania about is like, we went from having our own squad with like, you know, like Elizabeth Fiedler and Sarah Enemirato and Summer Lee, right? To now kind of almost tripling their numbers, right? Within Pennsylvania legislature. So now we, you know, I like to say in Pennsylvania, we don't have a squad, we got a battalion, right? That we're kind of expanding that. But I do think there's something about that too, where you say you're building power, getting more people that are going to run, right? So that you can actually, you're not just like, you know, the sole voice, uh, voice on a commission, but you can actually kind of accomplish, like and bring real change to the county.
Yes. The, on the Board of Commissioners, we have nine commissioners. Five of them are district commissioners. Four of them are at-large commissioners. The at-large are the entire county.
Right.
And when it comes to, when it comes to the Board of Commissioners, it's the same. You need to count to five. Five commissioners can change this county. Five commissioners standing together can, can make big changes. The idea is, let's get more progressive commissioners on that board. And yeah, and let's make sure that, make sure that people have power.
Absolutely. And I think that, you know, that's, one of the things that I've also found really interesting about, you know, about this kind of, this sea change that we're seeing in politics is that, you know, so you're running, so you're not, you're not running unopposed, right? I mean, you're running, I believe, what is it? Dan Hartzell, right? Currently has that, that seat?
Currently, that seat is, is held by, currently just, the District Five seat is held by Republican Jeffrey Dutt.
Oh, joke. Okay. Had that wrong.
And I do have a primary, I do have a primary opponent who is, I will say, the choice of the establishment, of the, the democratic establishment.
Yep. Yes, the, on the Board of Commissioners, we have nine commissioners. Five of them are district commissioners, four of them are at-large commissioners. The at-large are the entire county.
Right.
And when it comes to, when it comes to the Board of Commissioners, it's the same. You need to count to five. Five commissioners can change this county. Five commissioners standing together can, can make big changes. The idea is, let's get more progressive commissioners on that board. And yeah, and let's make sure that, um, make sure that people have power.
Absolutely. And I think that, you know, that's, one of the things that I've also found really interesting about, you know, about this kind of, this sea change that we're seeing in politics is that, you know, so you're running, so you're not, you're not running unopposed, right? I mean, you're running, I believe, what is it, Dan Hartzell, right, currently has that, that seat?
Currently, that seat is, is held by, currently, just the District Five seat is held by Republican Jeffrey Dutt.
Oh, joke, okay, had that wrong.
And I do have a primary, I do have a primary opponent who is, I will say, the choice of the establishment, of the Democratic establishment.
Yep.
You know, my, you know, I believe in, and my opponent, my primary opponent, on their website, it said they will be, they speak of wanting to be fiscally responsible, which to me, sounds like maintaining the status quo. That's not, that's not me. I'm talking about change. I'm, yeah, I, yeah, I'm talking about change for this county. I'm, I'm running for commissioner because I feel it's time for leadership that reflects this changing county. You know, let's not just dream of a better tomorrow. Let's make the hard decisions. Let's take the fights. Let's do the work each and every day that actually makes the change, that makes the better tomorrow. This is the time for courage, bold ideas. This is the time for change.
Man, I, I couldn't agree with you more, 100% with you on this, because I think, you know, again, we're talking about an unprecedented kind of historical moments of crisis, right? And you don't, you don't kind of get out of this by tinkering around the edges. It's like go big or go home time, I think, at this point. I mean, you have, you know, unprecedented climate, like climate crisis, unprecedented kind of, you know, can say governance and the rise of kind of white supremacy and white nationalism. You got to deal with kind of racial equity. You have to deal with kind of like, like historic, unbelievably historic kind of economic inequality that's going on here. I mean, I mean, we're having an economy that is going through a kind of absolute sea change. This is not a time to basically say, we could pretend that we can just keep things as they are and move forward. I mean, I think right now, I put my money on it. It's like, you know, it's, it's, it's the, whoever can kind of articulate and make the case like to the most amount of people on the ground that we've got the vision that is going to address like, you know, your, the, the challenges of your everyday life, right? I mean, I, I think, you know, I've, I've talked to too many of these, these politicians, both kind of, you know, statewide, kind of region-wide, or even nationally for that matter, who just basically think that you can come up with a nice little, you know, phrase like, you know, we be a fiscal, fiscally responsible. So you know what? That's the language of like, you know, the last century, right? The language of the new century is that, you know, we're either going to take the bull by the horns or we're all going down. And I really do think that, you know, that has to happen at the national level, yes, but it also has to happen right here in our communities. So I mean, you know, I'm, I'm with you 100% on this. So let me just take, let me just kind of, kind of a little kind of announcement here, and then I want to come back. I want to talk a little bit more about some, a little bit more about kind of where you see kind of things going from here, what you want folks to kind of know about your campaign. And yeah, look, if anybody out there wants to kind of give a call in, you got a comment, you got a question, you want to kind of throw it in this way. I know Omar would love to kind of answer any questions that you may have. If you want to know how you can help, we'll kind of tell you how to do that too as well. But I want to give you, for those folks listening out to Coop Live, wanted you to know that this week, we have a special midweek Out to Coop Live. Now, normally we don't do this, but you're going to start seeing more and more of this, right? We've got a midweek Out to Coop Live coming up this Wednesday, February 24th at 1:00 PM. That is going to be solely going to our YouTube stream. We're not, it's not going to be a Podbean Live, it's a YouTube stream. I'm going to be talking with Jordan Hopkins. He's an indie investigative reporter from Philly who's covering the rise of PA extremists and the grift at the core of the Patriot Party. So that is once again, Wednesday show streaming live on our YouTube channel beginning at 1:00 PM. And next Monday, same bad time, same bad channel, right here on the Podbean app, Podbean Live and our YouTube stream. I'll be talking with Sean O'Leary. O'Leary is a senior researcher with the Ohio River Valley Institute. We're going to be talking about their latest report, Appalachia's Natural Gas Counties Fracking Boom and Appalachia's Lost Economic Decade. You may have heard this, if it rings a bell, it's because the Philly Inquirer just did a phenomenal editorial coming out about kind of Pennsylvania's choice and its future, its energy future, and the choice it's going to have to make away from this kind of nonsense about fracking, from my personal opinion. But anyways, they quoted this report in there too as well. So next Monday, March 1st, 7:00 PM, right here on Out to Coop Live, we'll be talking with Sean O'Leary from the Ohio River Valley Institute about that report. So pretty cool. And want to remind you that you can help this, this show by becoming a patron for as little as $5 a month by going to patreon.com/rcpress. You can tune in, you know, show us some love right now. Hit that little gift icon at the bottom of your Podbean app. Give us a gift, cup of coffee, love balloon, roses, even a golden mic. Just get yourself some golden beans. You can send the love. Every gift that you send us helps support and expand this podcast. And I want to thank to all our members, all of our supporters, everyone else that tunes in, listens and shares the show. Want to remind you also, you can get on over to our YouTube page and make sure you subscribe to that page. You hit that bell, you ring that bell so you know every time that we go live. Make sure you leave us a review on your podcasts, wherever you get your podcasts, you're in iTunes, hit the, give us that five stars. Give us that review. The more that you kind of, kind of rate the show high, give your comments on that, the more it feeds into the algorithm and the more people get to find our show and we could amplify the voices that we bring here on Out to Coop Live even more than we do already. So there it is. So thank you, everybody, for supporting. And I think, um, want to give a shout out on this show too as well, I think I did on Friday, to our newest member, Brian. Brian, thank you again for coming in at the $5 a month level, become our latest patrons. So you can help support the show, patreon.com/rcpress. Give us a little love there. All right, so, so Omar, so, yeah, and again, the invite goes out to anybody. If anybody has a comment or question, please kind of jump in. We'd love to hear what you got to say. You can leave it in the comment boxes. You can leave it, you can kind of call into the show. We'd love to hear it. So let's kind of look forward a little bit. So you got, you're talking about, you got this campaign, right? You're working on equitable distribution of COVID-19. You're working on kind of homelessness problem. You want to kind of like jump in and kind of like help bolster this movement for criminal justice reform in the county. Kind of where do you go from here? Like, you know, you got folks out here, they're kind of thinking, okay, I want to find a way that I can get involved. I want to find a way that I could come on and help the campaign. Where can they go?
Well, they can go to, I believe you mentioned already the website. Let's mention it again. So OmarForLehigh.com, Omar, first name, O-M-A-R-for-L-E-H-I-G-H.com. There is my Facebook. Let me pull up the exact name of it. Omar For Lehigh County Commissioner. That's the Facebook page. And my campaign email, OmarForLehigh@gmail.com. So we definitely need help with signatures. Collecting signatures to get me on the ballot. And we do appreciate any donations that can be given.
Well, fantastic. So when you have the signature, so what's your, what's your timeline right here? What's the deadline for signatures at this point?
We're looking at, we want enough, we want 200 plus signatures by March 5th.
On March 5th. I think that, you know, look, I think people get out there. Let's, let's, let's get, let's get Omar up to 500 signatures, shall we? How about 1,000? How about that? Let's get him up and over the edge.
Yes, so please, if you're, you can help with collecting signatures if you live in District Five, which is Upper Salkin, Cooper'sburg, McConge, Southern Allentown, Imaeus, Salisbury, you can sign my petition because that is in District Five. Those areas are District Five of Lehigh County.
Excellent. So you are, if you are in Lehigh Valley, in the Lehigh County District Five, make sure you can get out and sign that petition. You can always go and help gather signatures by, you know, go check out OmarForLehigh.com. I'll put these links in the show notes for everybody. Head on over his Facebook page. Like him in there and see what, you know, see how you can get involved. And anything can help. You know, again, half the time you're talking about, you know, I hate the language that, that, you know, people get used, you know, the, the language of say off-year elections. Because really, there is no off-year election, right? It's like, an election is an election, right? Really what they mean is like, it's a non-presidential election, right? This is so important, right? And this is a lesson that we learned from the 2018 midterms, right? That this is where, say progressives in the left have historically, have struggled with turnout, right? Because people pay attention to the national politics and they go away. That is changing. And if you want to talk about the impact you can have, I mean, you know, people want to get out, get out to vote for presidential elections and everything like this, totally get that. But I'll tell you, your vote is worth like, like quadruple, if not times 10, right? In a kind of a quote unquote off-year election, right? When it is a non-presidential year election, right? Because the turnout is not there as much. So this is a way that you can amplify your impact even that much more and having real tangible results, right? By kind of building a kind of a locus of power within the county. And I know this has been happening already inside of the Allentown City Council, right? There's been, start, the slow sea changes happening there. It's been happening in Bethlehem City Council. You know, passing Bethlehem City Council, passed the Medicare for All provision, which in there. We're also seeing that happen in the Northampton County. We're seeing, you know, we've had around the show Tara Zerinsky, who's, you know, she's kind of up there in Northampton County. This is really, I think, where the rubber hits the road. And why I'm encouraging everybody and what I'm doing my best to kind of reach out to folks who I know are progressive candidates that are running at the county level, is to kind of, you know, get as much exposure out there as possible. Because like, look, we can have an impact, right? Everyone who's listening to this podcast right now, you can have an impact. And yes, you might not be in Lehigh Valley, you might not be in the Lehigh County District Five, right, to sign the petition, but you might be. And if you are, make sure you get that petition. Make sure you seek it out, find out where you can sign a petition, let them know and sign the petition. And for those folks who kind of might be outside that district, you can help gather petitions, right? You can donate what you can, right? Small donations go a long way, right, in kind of county elections. It's a big deal, right? The more that we can help support this, the more that actually helps build the movement to as well. Because what it does, we see that we can actually have an effect, right? Getting out there and supporting candidates, getting out there and supporting candidates with the kind of agenda that is going to be, you know, as you say, you know, this is a people's platform. All right, this is not something that is, you know, you're going to, you know, make sure that you kind of secure the hockey rink, right? You know, I mean, I mean, you know, I mean, like, you know, I'm saying, I'm sure like, can we bring in another Starbucks? I mean, you know, no, we're looking at like, how do we actually have people at the county, especially at the county level, the city level, who are going to be responding to the needs of the people who live there? So that's pretty, like, pretty awesome. So let me ask you, this is, I mean, we didn't talk so much about this before, but, so, you know, if you're thinking about, like, thus far, I, I recognize it's kind of early in the campaign, right? I know that you had the, there was a signature gathering part. Were you, were you at that one at Cedar Beach?
Yes.
Yeah, I thought I saw your picture on that, right? So I mean, you're out there for that, kind of that gathering. So what's it been like just as, you know, a candidate, right? I mean, kind of deciding to make, I mean, deciding to run for office is one thing, but then turning that corner and actually kind of running for office, right? And doing that work, I mean, how's that experience been so far?
It's been, I'll definitely admit, it's been a challenge. I've seen some, there are some things that definitely surprised me about running for office. Particularly the, I'd say particularly, I've seen some, some schmoozing. And I'm not a natural schmoozer, so to speak. That, that's, that caught me by surprise. And also, it's, definitely takes a little practice to, to learn to ask for money.
Yes, that's one of the hardest things, I can tell you that.
Yeah, it's just, it's, for me, it's not natural. I've had to practice a lot with my campaign manager, Maria Andrews. She's been excellent. She, she knows this inside and out. And I'd say those are the two biggest challenges, just the schmoozing and that ask, and the asking for money. It's again, calling someone who you may not know very well or calling a friend or a family member and coming in with that pitch for money. A little weird to me.
Yeah, it's strange. And I could tell you, look, I mean, when we started Raging Chicken, I mean, I know this is, this is a little bit of a different world, but it started Raging Chicken and started getting going. You know, that's one of the things that I found most say distasteful, right? About having to kind of like ask for money and that. And I had, you know, I think, you know, a rather naive understanding of the way that we could kind of create, say, a progressive media site, right? That, you know, the whole idea, we build it, then they will come, right? That people will want to give us money, right? Because, why? Because there's a lack of infrastructure, a progressive infrastructure. So therefore, it's natural that they would see this and be like, oh, yes, let us help support you. The reality is that that's not the way it works, you know? And yet, you know, if you're going to host a website, right? If you're going to kind of, kind of expand a podcast, right? If you're going to make sure you got security measures on your website, right? Those things cost money. And then there's this kind of point where, and I could tell you for whatever it's worth, this is the, you know, a tip from my end of things, is that I found that, you know what? I'm just going to write it down and I'm going to read it when I'm on air, right? And it's just only through the practice of saying the words over and over again, and then realizing that actually that comes and has an effect. And then if, like, if we want nice things, right, people got to support it, right? If we want good things, right, you know, you know, it's, whatever, I'm not going to do the pony thing, but, so, you know, we want, we want kind of like, you know, healthcare. We want access to vaccines. If we want to reform a criminal justice programs, right? If we want to make sure that we, we've kind of addressed the housing crisis, right, in our backyards. Well, you know what? That takes money. And I think the progressive community especially has started to get the sense that, hey, wait a minute, like, we don't, you know, yes, we're not, we're not billionaires, right? We're not millionaires over here, but we certainly can contribute, right? And our small dollars have gone a long way. And we saw this with the Bernie Sanders campaign. We see this, what is happening with the squad. We see this, what's happening like with, like the turnover with Akil Saval kind of down in, down in Philadelphia. You know, we see, I mean, we see the effect of those small donations. And that is our power, right? That is all of our power that we can do this.
Yes, it's, you know, there's, you know, there's the old saying, you need to put your money where your mouth is.
Yeah.
I think maybe we should change that. We need to put our money where our values are.
There you go, man. There's your pitch right there. You just wrote that one right in real time, right there. Put that down in your script. That's all I got to say.
That's going on the website.
There you go, man. Well, listen, if anybody does have any kind of questions, concerns, we're going to be kind of closing up shop here, kind of in a few minutes. But if you have any comments, you want to kind of chime in, you want to call in, please do. I'd love to hear what you've got to say. I know Omar would too as well. And we want to remind you that you continue to support this show by going to patreon.com/rcpress and become a patron for those $5 a month. And you can go over and help Omar out, right? All you got to do is kind of head on over to OmarForLehigh.com. That's OmarForLehigh.com. You got all this information there about how you can help out, how you can help support his campaign, how you can donate to his campaign and everything else. So as we get to kind of wind things up here tonight, what are some of the things that you'd want to leave? What kind of message you want to leave to people might be listening tonight, might be tuning into the podcast? Or, you know, just kind of people in Lehigh County writ large?
Well, I'm gonna, well, I will say that, again, we need volunteers. We're going to need help. We, you know, I under, I know that there's a pandemic, but we need to do more than talk to just the super voters. We need to talk to, again, those people who I've mentioned before, who feel that the system has left them and we need to reengage them and let them know that there's an election every year. And every election really does matter. And that will involve door knocking. We need to, well, getting signatures. I'm, I plan on doing door knocking to get signatures in District Five. We have some names of progressives, but we got to knock on their doors. And we need to try to give them a sign. So if they can, if you can help with that over the next, by March 5th, please contact us.
There you go. There you go. Get on the board, get on over there. Make sure that you're going to kind of OmarForLehigh.com. Kind of, if you can help them out, you're in the kind of Lehigh Valley, you can get on over there, even if you're not right in kind of like District Five. You can, you can go and you can help get, gather those petitions and make sure that they're done. We've got, what, kind of like a week and a half, a week and a half left? Is that right?
Till March 5th, you're talking?
March 5th, right? I'm sorry, I'm pulling.
I had to fill my calendar.
Yeah, yeah, I'm doing the same thing right now.
Yeah, we want to get, yeah, we want to get these in by March 5th. And yeah, let me mention, we are taking into consideration COVID-19. We are going to, we're wearing masks. I'm going to insist that if you're going to go knock on doors, you wear two masks. I'm going to insist that you stay six feet away. We're going to, I'm going to talk to my campaign manager about. to talk to my campaign manager about budgeting for some hand sanitizer, like little packets of hand sanitizer. Yeah, we're going to do this as COVID safe, as we can get it.
Well, and there's, there's a perfect example. What, so like, let's say, for example, you were looking for other ways you can contribute. You just heard, you just heard him say right now, you want to do door knocking, you're going to need a double mask, you're going to need hand sanitizers. You got, you want to kind of buy a case of hand sanitizer, kind of deliver it over to, deliver it over to Omar? There you go. You got it. You got it, got to kind of, want to kind of contribute some mass to help out the campaign, then you can do that, right? We can deliver kind of like, the cash that is needed to make the campaign run. You can also kind of help them out with the things that they need in order to support the campaign and their door knocking campaign. But fantastic. You already got Shereen tuned in, and she says, look, she's going to try to come out and help, and help out with the campaign ASAP. So there you go. You've got your first person stepping up to the plate right now, right here on Out to Coop Live.
Thank you.
All right.
Let me type that in here.
Yeah. Well, listen, man, I, I really appreciate you taking the time coming out tonight. I know it's like, you know, it's a crunch time of the campaign, just had the launch, now you're out there kind of gathering those signatures, making sure that, you know, that you kind of get on the ballot, that once you get on the ballot, then it's going to be the kind of the race for the primary. So, look, I hope you stay in touch. And love to have you come back on the show as we kind of get the campaign out, kind of, kind of closer to the actual primary. And we'll continue to spread the word and help see if we can get some folks out there to help out with the campaign.
Thank you. Thank you for the help. Thank you for having me.
Oh, man, I'm just, you know, my pleasure. You know, like I said, anytime, love to see it goes on. And like I said, my heart is always in the Lehigh Valley. So I, I just love it when I get to talk to folks in Lehigh Valley. And the more that we can build out the media infrastructure in Lehigh Valley, the better. So there you go. All right, everybody. Hey, look, thank you so much for tuning in. Thank you for the offers to kind of help Omar out and his, and his campaign. And thank you especially to Omar Ray. Omar Ray is running for Lehigh County Commissioner in District Five. Thank you all for coming on the show. And hey, man, best of luck in the days ahead.
Thank you.
All right. This is Kev Mahoney, editor and founder of Raging Chicken. Thank you all for tuning out, or tuning out, tuning in, checking us out. I don't know what I'm talking about. Too much snow shoveling today, I guess. But hey, I hope we'll see you on Wednesday for our special 1:00 PM Out to Coop Live. We'll see you then.